Okay, so let's open the June 11th meeting of the Town and Rutland Planning Board. First order of the day is the minutes from May 28th. Make a motion to accept the May 28th, 1,024 minutes. With the second.
You gotta pull the house.
May I? Would you like to wait a moment? Maybe he went to the other.
There are a lot of cars in Parkmont.
Second page, 1,024 minutes. The end of the first paragraph. Where it says applicant to start with him.
Ah.
Hey, what's going on?
He has to make an entrance.
Kindergarten graduation, I apologize. Big deal. Yeah, no, I didn't. I gotta go again.
Was it the finger painting?
No, that's a good one.
The finger painting got you?
Yeah, I just can't get it, I just can't get it done.
End of the first paragraph, town planner report. Where's the applicant to start with him, and I feel it should say town planner slash planning board. Him, him in the future will mean what?
Okay, I understand what you're saying, yep.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions, additions, deletions?
If we were talking about the notes from last meeting, no comments.
Next order, we have an application for a sign for the Rutland Veterinary Clinic. Do we have someone here?
Do I stand up, do I come out?
Well, you can take a seat up here.
Okay.
Whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Amy?
John.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you too.
Can we just give them an overview?
Um, yeah, so essentially the vet, he's got a very tiny sign. We just happened to, this is a sort of reconditioned sign that we were gonna use for him. That's not actually stone, that is a fully carved sign foam sign to look like stone, so. So yeah, he just wanted a bigger sign. And that's what we're proposing, and I know John mentioned that maybe you were going to be wanting to ask about lighting, but there's no lighting. No, no, I mean, possibly in the future, maybe some solar lights, that would be very directed and pointed at the sign.
It's not backlit, like?
No, no, no. It's just a carved sign.
You mentioned repurposed?
Yes.
You said he's got like a panel like that somewhere on the property, and you're just sliding it into?
No, well, that was a, it was an actual Bank of America sign that we removed, so we're just putting new faces on it.
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Are you, you work for?
AG Signs, yeah, yeah.
I went to school for graphic design, so it's probably just gonna be me.
Okay.
Making slight comments, but. In this, I know there's certain criteria that were, it's more just suggestions.
Sure.
And free, free design advice.
Okay.
Cause I goofed around with this for a little bit. You know, for, for example, got a lot of dead space on both the left and right, it's 68 inches. You know, and really, it didn't, it looked fine here, and then when I flipped it and saw it here. You know, I'm not sure, you know, billboard wise, when people are driving by, whether they're gonna catch really what the sign says or anything like that.
Okay.
So I was gonna just throw constructive comments for it, you know, and I just said, you know what, I got photoshopped. Instead of just saying what might work or what might not work, you know, I would drop the dead space personally and go with something, cause it's hard to design in a rectangle, you know, especially with a circular graphic.
Right.
How are you gonna? You're gonna have dead space, there's almost nothing, nothing you can do about it. But I'm, in terms of bank feed block, maybe it'd be easier to do something smaller, but obviously I didn't realize it's a repurposed sign. But if you want, I mean, I can show the board some.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Designs, you know, you could, obviously, I just went off a PDF.
Yep.
Just, just different ways to reuse the same artwork or the same elements. You know, cause that, for me, to see a sign go in on a place that a lot of people use in town. You know, to catch the new customer driving by, if this road generates 10,000 cars. I don't know, I don't know what the traffic count for the day is, but it's pretty significant. So I mean, to get the, get the wording much more visible, I, you know, I'd be. If this rendition of where, like, street level or sidewalk level, I mean, if you're driving by, you're almost not gonna see it. So I'd feel bad for them to put all this work into it.
Well, they're getting a very discounted price on it. Well, the only thing is, because it is essentially one piece.
Yeah.
You don't, we can't cut it, we can't, it'll, it'll, it's sign foam, so it'll break apart.
What is, I guess, are you saying the base is already?
It is one piece.
You're gonna revinyl the whole thing?
It just, well, no, we, we will be attaching new faces to it, but it looks like in your design, you might have gone up a little bit.
I just went square, so it's just gonna take the sides off.
Yeah.
I used the same base, just to, but you could do whatever you want, I just figured. To get the name bigger, really just to find a way to get the name bigger, that's my only, I just, just a comment.
No, I completely understand, and, you know, we deal with this a lot, being in the sign business, and, you know, when somebody has their logo, their logo might not translate.
Yeah.
In certain things, and in which, in this case, it doesn't, but, I mean, we, I will certainly take the recommendation back to the vet and ask him if we can kind of rework that a little bit, to make it a little bit more visible.
Yeah.
But yeah, unfortunately, I mean, that is his logo, so I can't, I don't, I can't really mess with the integrity of that. Yeah, exactly, so.
Depends on how attached they are to it, of course.
Right, right.
It's just my suggestion.
And I don't know how long he's been there, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that he's probably been there for a really long time. So, and I, I mean, and in comparison to what he's been using, a tiny little hanging sign by his mailbox, I mean, that's not visible at all from the street, so, but I, I completely understand what you're saying. I just can't, I can't mess with the size, the dimensions of the sign, I just can't cut it down, it's not, I can't do it.
You have to be careful with the size, not overdo it.
Right, 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 yeah.
I mean, it does help that he's been in business a long time. It'd be different if this were a new business, and people were trying to find it, who normally wouldn't go there, but it sounds like he has a pretty established clientele.
Yeah, from what I can tell, but.
So the, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
So on the, on the second page where it shows the renderings of what it'll look like on the outside of the building, on the grass, in the top right picture, and the bottom right picture, the bottom right picture shows what looks like an existing post with a little sign?
Yes, yep, that's a sign.
Is that remaining, or is that coming down?
You know, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure, but I would assume that it would probably be coming down.
Okay, cause the top photo doesn't show that in the picture, so I'm wondering if that's gonna obscure the new sign if it stays?
Yeah, no, it's probably coming down, yeah.
Probably coming down, okay, that makes sense, okay. So this, this does not require a formal approval by the planning board.
Okay.
Site plan approval, special permit, it's simply a review of the planning board to kind of give feedback.
Okay.
And so, this is, this is something that, you know, if, coming out of this conversation, and if we wanted to continue it to the meeting in two weeks to, you know, see what the owner says as far as feedback, we could certainly do that. Obviously, we don't wanna hold anybody up, but if the board and the applicant agree, you know, this is not a public hearing. So it's, it's more of an informal review and discussion.
I would defer to the applicant on, I would defer to the applicant on which way they wanna go, if they want to proceed with this. Or if they wanna try to adjust the design, but it's totally up to them.
That's right. The only thing to me is, we don't really have, I don't think we have much control over content on the sign.
Only square footage though, John?
Yes.
It's square footage?
You know, line of signage.
It complies.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's nothing, there's nothing here that violates the sign by laws, cause, yeah.
I defer to the chair.
Anybody have any problems as far as?
I mean, if you put it up, it would just be more personal taste.
Sure. Yeah, of course, I understand.
Something permanent on the side of an extremely dizzy road, I'd consider, even if, and I'll mention, this is, there was a lady who used to own the vet business, she recently sold and moved away, so if he's theoretically new, maybe, building's not different.
Right.
It's worth it to consider whether or not your logo could use an update
Yeah.
in the process of putting up a, a big change like this, so.
I agree with you.
Something to think about, and I'm not opposed to it, but in the end, it's more just like, just a question if you wanna get some, some more exposure with that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Anybody have any further comments?
No.
I know this is not a public hearing, but just to say, I think I wanna see, is there any comment from the public? Nope, silence. So, it appears number one meets the applicant criteria. And, like I say, it's what they actually put on the sign, you know, unless it becomes something really, really strange. I guess, uh.
So I guess we use, I guess the sentiment of the board is that it's gonna be up to the applicant whether or not they, they implement Keith's advice?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Or any other thing, just that, as long as the size, the size stays the same, then that's fine.
Yeah, that won't change whatsoever.
So, I don't know, I guess, probably would be most appropriate, it would just be a motion, and we got no objection.
Make a motion as such. I would accept it.
Any discussion? And we will forward that to the building inspector, who's the actual permit.
Okay.
Raising authority.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, next on our agenda is a continued public hearing. On the application Scott Latour and Phil Rappis for a special permit in the Town Village Center at 191 Mary Paxton Road. Do we have anyone here representing them?
Are you opening up the public hearing? Applicant.
It's a continuing.
At 6:43.
I don't see any fans representing them.
Norm, can I give a quick run through of what's happened since? It's been a combination of a lot of activity, yet no activity. Yes, they've been, they began the process of removing a lot of the debris from the site pursuant to the site walk that we had. So they made progress on that, but that has stalled and hasn't been completely finished. Also, the board of health agent went down and investigated the fill they've been installing, and said that they're okay to be installing that fill, cause it's fixing prior erosion, and he didn't see any issue with the materials that they're installing for fill. So, there was some activity, however, one thing that continues to be a little bit baffling is the lack of communication from this applicant and this owner. I think the board has a couple of previous letters I've sent, and you've seen the emails that I've sent listing the information that still needs to be submitted, and the points of discussion that need to be addressed concerning this project. And last week, one of the abutters came to my office and let me know that there was some information on the applicant's Facebook page that indicated that they may be not pursuing this application. I sent an email to the property owner and the applicant to verify that, have not received any response from them. So, at this point, I gotta be honest, this, in 25 years, I've never seen this. I've never seen this lack of communication, this lack of cooperation by an applicant, baffling. But, the 90 days the planning board has to act on this special permit expires, I know I said July 9th, but Peter Crane pointed out that there's a 31-day month in there, so I think it expires on July 8th, which would mean that the planning board only has this meeting and one more meeting in June before the 90 days to expire. Now, the planning board does have the option of granting an extension, requesting an extension, I think they would, you know, you could extend it if you wanted to, but usually, a public hearing, a time period is extended when both sides are working towards a resolution on something. Where the applicant and the planning board are working towards a resolution on some kind of condition of approval, or if there's information that needs to be provided, where in this case, there's simply no information being provided by the applicant. So it feels like this, this project, this public hearing is at a stalemate.
Doesn't, doesn't there also have to be a cooperation on the extension, both parties have to?
Yes. So whether it's the applicant requesting the extension, or the board requesting the extension, yes, it's usually agreed upon by both parties. So, this project right now, so it's, it's, it's up to the board as far as how you want to proceed at this point. You know, I mean, the options are to, the applicant's not here, we haven't received any new information since the site visit in the last public hearing, so there's nothing to review. It's the board, you can, you can decide to continue this again, to see if we can get the applicant to actually communicate. Or, at any time, the board could potentially vote to deny this special permit based on simply a lack of information, because that's what it is right now, is the applicant simply isn't providing the information being requested from the board.
And the denial of such would be a two-year period of when they could not reapply?
For this project, yes, however, the applicant could potentially, the property owner could have an applicant come forward with a different special permit that would not be subject to that two years. So, I believe if he came back with a different use, it probably wouldn't be subject to that two-year moratorium. I could verify that with town council, because each special permit is different.
So if we were to not, if we were to hypothetically, if we were to deny it on the use category, not necessarily as presented, that wouldn't bar them from a two-year hiatus on reapplying, as long as it's a different use?
As long as it's a different, yes. I could check with town council, because if he had a same use with a different applicant, I, I don't know, I don't know if a different applicant for the same use would still be subject to that two-year more term, that's something I could, I could ask town council to weigh in on.
Well, yeah, does it fall on the applicant or the property owner? You know, which is sort of working as, as one, but they are two different.
It's the owner, I believe, because the special permit runs with the property.
Okay, right. So it's really on.
And Norm, seeing as how we have so many people here, I would hope to keep it open until the time lapses. So you know, that's the end of the first 90 days. I kind of, I kind of agree, but I'm actually a little bit confused, cause I have never heard of this two-year moratorium type thing on special permits. Loan changes, yes. Are you sure it applies to special permits as well?
I'm pretty sure it does, I can verify that.
If they're applying for the same use, the same plan set, that's a two-year.
And, and that's why, if it gets to that point, and Britton can vouch for this, usually if it gets to a point where it looks like the project is not going to be approved, the planning board will work with the applicant to request that they withdraw without prejudice.
Correct.
And if they actively withdraw without prejudice, it allows them to come back at any time in the future with the same project. Again, it usually, it's maybe the applicant is not quite ready, there's something that needs to be resolved for them to actually complete the application, complete the project to the board's satisfaction, but yeah. They usually withdraw without prejudice to avoid that two-year moratorium.
And to John's point, this is highly irregular. Given the email and the correspondence that's been given to the applicant, and given that information, and they have, at a minimum, it takes an email to say, hey, we withdraw.
Yeah, I've never run into this.
To say that it's continuing is, I think honestly, just being very forthwith, a waste of everybody's time. Including the board, the applicant, and the owner.
I just wanna give an opportunity for the owner to help their neighbors. And that's why I wanna give them, you know.
But without this special permit, they have no obligation to do so, unfortunately.
We don't have an enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sharon LaFle, 175 Mary Paxton Road. They were doing some work there on Sunday, I stopped by just to see what was going on, and I spoke to Scott, and he said that he's pulling out, he has nothing to do with it anymore. He bought a parcel of land in Leicester, and he's moving his business there. He said, the hell with Rutland.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let you guys, that's, that's, that's what he told me.
It's information, but it's not official information.
Right.
It's official, it's coming from me. Yeah, no, that's what, that's what he said to me when I spoke with him on Sunday, when we were at the property. Cause they were pulling everything out of there, the excavator, the back, bulldozers, and other equipment. So I said, oh, what's going on? You doing the thing? And they said, nope, the town wants to play games with us. I bought a parcel of land, I'm done with this place. Hell with this town. I said, oh, all right. And that's, that's where it was left, so I, I thought he would have pulled the application, but I guess not.
I guess that's what we get for following, following the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the application submit, submittal regulations have been in place for 13 years, so I don't know what games to which he's referring, but.
I guess, my, my other question is, should we ask John to try to communicate with them once more, just one final time? I would. I'd run out the clock. I have to agree with that, I don't know what's anybody else saying.
By run out the clock, you mean make it on the next two agendas? I don't, I don't agree with that.
No, one agenda on the 25th, because I think, Norm, if I'm correct, our first meeting in July is the 9th.
Yeah.
So, the 8th would be the expiration, so it'd be one more meeting on the 25th. I guess, I'd go to, I guess my question would be, for what purpose?
So.
Cause I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Keeping something going just for the sake of having it on the agenda.
For discussion of the board, I, I don't agree with the intended use that's presented here. They've made no decisions to change that use, or anything at all. So, as, if the applicant was here tonight, I was just gonna tell him, like, I don't approve of the use. So all the other stuff, the elevations, the stormwater management plan, all that stuff's still needed, but the use, I'm, I'm, I'm out. And that's one of four, or one of five for a super majority. I didn't want them to waste time or money on looking at something like that, so. I don't know that there's any point in extending unless the change of use is coming, but again, if we wanna offer them that time for the change of use, which sounds like it isn't coming, then we can keep it on the agenda, but I just don't want anybody wasting time on it.
So you're referring to the motorcycle repair?
Motorcycle repair, which I, I'm okay with, it's the industrial, the hydraulics, the building, yeah. And we gave them that guidance on two hearings.
Right.
So, I was okay with the mo, I'm okay with the motorcycle, obviously, there's a lot of boxes that need to get checked.
Yeah.
But as a motorcycle repair facility, I'm okay with that, we can, we can get there on that.
Yes.
But, light industrial, the excavators, dozers, tractor trailer rigs coming in? I'm not, I'm not gonna support that, so.
I agree with you.
So the way that it's written now, unless they were to come in and work with us, which, that, it sounds like that's just not gonna happen. But I just, I don't want anybody wasting time on it.
Yeah, it is odd, you know, I think we tried with the applicant. It seemed like Phil showed up the last meeting, maybe he'd come in today, but maybe not, it seems like, so. It does make it difficult to figure out what to do next, but at the same time, it's very obvious what's going on, so. Yeah, it's too bad, I mean, good luck to them in Leicester, if that's the deal, you know. Maybe, maybe it's gonna be easy in Leicester for them to do what they're doing. Maybe they just picked the wrong piece of property, thinking they'd get somewhere, you know, and it would be pretty.
Having been in Leicester for a short time, I don't think it's gonna be easier.
Yeah, unless they picked an industrial lot, but, yeah. So, good luck to them, I mean, yeah, it's up to you guys, you know. I can kind of agree on, it's, it's pretty obvious no matter what.
I'll accept the motion either to continue the hearing or to close the hearing. First of all, any public comment?
So if you continue the hearing, and they don't get back to you by July 8th, they can't come back for two years, right?
Right.
Under the same use.
If they don't withdraw without prejudice, if, if it goes to a denial, this use can't come back for two, at least two years.
And the use right now is for the motorcycle shop.
And.
And.
Correct.
Correct.
So, property owner hypothetically could come back in six months with a mixed-use building with retail on the first floor, apartments up above, and that would be a completely different use, and he wouldn't have to wait two years for that. And I mean, my opinion has been all along that I would have loved to see, and I know that the board would love to see something happen with this property, but the right project, and I know that there's some frustration, because the abutters would like to see something happen with that property. However, it's my opinion that it's, it's worse when you get the wrong use and the wrong applicant into a property, because it can lead to long-term problems, because then the board has no control over that property until something changes and something switches over. So, although I know there's frustration that nothing's happening with this property now, potentially, it, it, it's better than having the wrong project go into that property.
So does it mean that the trailer trucks will still be coming in at night?
No, that's, that would have to be taken care of as a zoning violation issue, that the building department would have to follow up on. And I, I think I, I think we should, excuse me, we should also follow up on the remaining trailers that are still there, because that's not, that was never approved by the planning board to store tractor trailer trailers there. So, that's also a violation of zoning, but that would be taken care of through the building department.
Are those trailers still there?
There's a few, there's about four, yeah.
Still four?
There's there.
Yeah, there's four, they've been there for four years that I've been here.
They've been there nine years.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, they've, they've made progress on cleaning up, it's better.
Yes.
But it's still, it's still not where it needs to be.
Okay. Well, Mr. Williams, what do you think?
I'll take his word, that rebuild. I close, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I will second, I will second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. 6:58.
With that, I entertain a motion to deny a special permit.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the special permit, for one, anyone, Mary Paxton Road?
Second. Is there any discussion on that?
Do we have to specify the denial for the use?
No, because it's on, it's on record with the special permit.
Just making sure I didn't need that in the motion.
Exactly, exactly. But, you do have to state the reasons, so, you could, it could be for the reasons of the use is not appropriate for the site, lack of information. You could, it could be for the reasons of um, the use is not appropriate for the site, lack of information or both.
Noncompliance with zoning.
Yep.
Like to make a motion to deny the special permit for one anyone, Barry Paxton Road, special permit on improper use for zoning.
Do I have a resecond?
Resecond.
Sorry, just clarifying.
And once again, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay.
We do hope Phil comes comes back to us at some point with something.
Yeah, and well, I'll I'll work behind the scenes, obviously it won't be before the planning board, but I'm getting those trailers removed. And um, we have the petition that's part of the file with, you know, those other complaints, so we will follow up on those and see if we can get that site completely cleaned up at least. And get those out of there. Um, have they still been running in and out of there at all hours or has that stopped?
I I don't yet.
Okay, good.
But I I'm not in the back, like, um, I don't know if there's other people here that are. Like, and the N units thirteen and um twelve. I haven't seen, there is no tractor trailers there right now, but.
Okay, I'll take a ride out there tomorrow to see what's out there.
Actually looks good and as a butters, we weren't, you know, we were all in favor of getting something done there, but um.
I know. But you can't, you can't drag someone to the table when they don't wanna come to the table, so. Okay, so that's that for now. No, you don't have to leave. If you really have nothing better to do.
We got a lot of stuff to talk about.
Gonna miss the fun stuff, the exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, take care.
Okay, next item, we have a public hearing. In addition to Stony Brook Estates for a special permit uh for an estate lot. Uh, identified on Brittenel Drive. Uh, assessors map forty four, block B, lot two. Uh. And, we have the application here. Uh, this is a lot that was A and R'd. A couple of years ago.
Uh, did the big date? I'm Julian from New England Environmental Design.
Uh, we have the data this drawing and uh, October twenty first, two thousand sixteen.
The form A was done, the lot was set aside for this purpose, but a special permit wasn't sought at that time. But it has all the criteria to meet the requirements for a special permit for an estate lot. So we filed the permit, special permit application to follow suit, so that he can. obtain a, he, the owner or she, to obtain a building permit.
Um, no, no, no building on the lot at the moment, or no.
There's nothing on it right now, it's a vacant lot.
Yeah, they're not looking to place a building either at the moment. Well, this documents from two thousand sixteen.
Right, well, we'll do a, we'll do a plot plan for the building inspector.
Okay.
With this, depends on what he sells.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be a ranch, it could be a colonial. Uh, we know the cri- the criteria we have to meet, the house has to be set back, where the lot is two hundred feet wide. And that's a, the building inspector will.
Yeah, verify that.
Will verify that and require that.
So it'll likely go at the two hundred line mark.
That's where it's can go there or behind, it can't go any closer. That's how they, that's the requirement of a s- estate lot.
Well, it meets frontage in area. If I'm not mistaken, a whole pile of fill was brought in a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Was probably gonna be the driveway.
The driveway's pretty much shaped, it exists all the way down to the bottom of the hill, and that's where the house will end up.
Can you be more specific where this is located?
I don't sound too picky on the form. There's no like, you don't get a printed name, you just get any scribbled signature. I mean, obviously, it's a company name, but um, special permit form.
Oh, the special permit.
It's just, I don't know, just a curiosity. I mean, down there, they have to fill out some other stuff, it's just blank. You know, I.
So you you're saying there should be a line for the the name typed in?
I get, or. I guess it, well, it is right here, other only information, but it's just been. Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, uh, just just curious. Cause it's it's Stony Book. Just a different name, yeah.
Yeah.
Submittal company. The only other comment that I would make is that in this initial A and R and application. Uh, there was a condition on there that uh, they reconstruct minimum, I believe fifty feet of stone wall. Along Brittenel Drive.
Okay.
And.
Was that done, I I kinda kinda remember this. Was that done at the very beginning, where the first, the red houses that's kinda facing? Is there some wall in there?
Yeah, it was supposed to be.
Supposed to be, it didn't, it never got built?
The whole length of the street's supposed to be stone wall.
Okay.
Done it.
Fifty feet of it?
Yeah.
Similar to what, Clea had had mentioned that to me, that you may be asking that, you couldn't make it right now. Um, kinda like what he had to do down further just recently, blocking the, he said that's.
Maybe a little bit better than that.
Little, little tighter. Was that in a previous public hearing that was required? Can we reference that?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
So I I know we're saying fifty feet, but.
I thought they did something here, but I could be wrong.
Norm, can I say something, please? You can't put a condition on an A and R. You can put a condition on this special permit, but you can't put a condition on an A and R, so if the board wants to make that a condition of this special permit. You certainly, you certainly can.
Correct, yeah.
Wish I had brought it with me, because I have a copy of the decision. That I printed out from from my own files.
Can you tell me where this lot's located?
It's, they come up to fifty six, I don't know. Work kinda curves, there's a house, there's a red, I believe there's a red house on the very corner.
If there was an agreement in writing.
There's another house on the driveway on the left.
I know we still have to.
A blue one, and then you just go past the blue one, that's where you get to the tree line. There's a driveway.
Cause there's a written decision.
You know, you know.
Past that other blue house.
Yes, at that time, probably, yeah, but it's good to make it as a condition here to get it in writing.
On the same side.
So, so Norm, my recommendation would be if that was kind of, as Britton put it, a gentleman's agreement back at that time. That that the board should make that a condition of approval for this special permit, that way it's official, it's it's recorded, it's in writing. And that way, when they apply for building permits, the building department will know that to do that before they can. Receive their uh, you know, whether it's a building permit or prior to occupancy, whatever the whatever the board's pleasure is.
I wish I had that document in front of me. Sitting on my kitchen table.
I I think it's fair to say if Clea, if Clea knew.
It needs to be, I just thought that there was a piece done years ago, but that's.
I would say that if Clea had kinda propped you that that might come up, obviously, and Norm you knew about it, then I'd say that's a, that was an agreement that. Whether or not it's a public hearing or not. If you're, if you're amenable to.
As, it wasn't done somewhere where it was disrupted.
No, no.
Cause that's because what what happened is I put a piece of it up, bulldozed.
Right, and that that upper part where the stone wall is, that's original, that's not, that's not new. So.
So where is this piece that needs to be fixed?
That was not specified.
Okay.
Okay, it's just gonna be somewhere along here.
Oh, it's not frontage in front of that lot?
Doesn't have to be.
Put it where it can be.
That's the only lot.
But then they may not own all those lots when they develop.
Well, yeah.
Can we leave it that there's fifty feet and we can put it in a reasonable spot in that area so that it's not on a cliff or it's not.
Above that, that's not built on yet.
Okay, so wherever, right on the, right on the frontage line.
Yeah.
Fifty feet of wall has to be constructed.
Here's what I'll do, if this project gets approved tonight, I'm gonna draft a decision for the next meeting. I will put the, I I will word a condition in there that the applicant can look at and the board can look at. That will reflect that and we can, we can iron out the language on that. Um, I'll put something to the effect of, you know, a location to be agreed upon between the board and the applicant. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, with that, any? Questions from the board, any more comments?
What's a special permit for this piece? What is the special?
Create an estate lot.
And what's an estate lot?
An estate lot is a release from normal zoning, uh if you have a lot that is. Uh, in excess of five acres of land, then rather than the two hundred foot required frontage, you can reduce the frontage. To fifty feet on the road.
So it's got more than five acres with it?
Five point sixty.
So it's gonna go down in the back then, towards the swamp?
I would say some, if you go way back, it probably is, it probably is swamp way back now.
I have to go back too far.
Or shared driveway, etc.
Special permission decision.
It's for one single family home only.
I I don't understand, I still don't understand why it's special permit, wasn't.
Just time, just, it was just. You had other things going on and.
So did it lapse, or is it?
No, it just. Felt it regrets.
Okay. But it was A A and R.
It was A and R for that to be reserved for for future use.
Yeah, okay.
And here's the future, I guess. Yeah.
The future is now.
The future is now.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, and I'll accept the motion.
Uh, accept the motion to close the public hearing on this estate lot for Stony Brook Estates. And.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve, and then what's the street address for this?
It's Brittenel Drive.
Brittenel Drive.
Does it have?
Doesn't have a house on it.
Doesn't have a house on it, so a lot.
Lot two, assessors map forty four B.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, two motions to approve special permit, or deny special permit or whatever.
Uh, motion to approve special permit for Stony Brook Estates, um. Assessors map listed as forty four B two, uh lot four oh one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And once again, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I guess that you now dropped up a a decision, that condition for the, y'all add that condition into the next meeting.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing on the position of Neil Harvey of Harvey Remodeling. On behalf of the owners, Daniel and Douglas, Harry Lully, for a special permit. Uh, to construct an accessory dwelling. And, ninety seven Pleasant Dale Road.
Norm, before we get into the project itself, I'd like to make a procedural comment. Um, Mr. Harvey came in, um, he got his abutters list, he he gave me the envelopes, uh, the abutters mailing did go out. Um, probably about ten days ago. Um, Mr. Harvey did get a certificate of mailing from the post office, but he um can't locate it. So I wanted the board know to know that when Mr. Harvey came in, I did check the abutters list to make sure every abutter that was on the list. We had an envelope for, and we did, and um, the mailings did go out, it just, we don't have the certificate of mailing because it was misplaced.
Will be a second mailing.
There'll be a second mailing with a notice of decision to the single butters, yeah.
Okay, so uh, just overview.
Yeah, so we're um looking for a special permit for an accessory dwelling for the in, for an in-law apartment. Um, the the, they're always here now. Um, the mother and father are the original owners of the house, they still live there now, so it's like a combined family right now. Um, their son bought the house like from from them and. Okay, yeah, yeah, but this is the family that lives there currently, they're looking to create a separate living space. Cause the family's growing now with young children and things like that, so um, so the idea is to create. Um, an in-law apartment and looking at the criteria for the special permit, I feel as though. Um, this meets all of the criteria required for the special permit. And in particular, you know, if you look at the um, the nature, they wanted to fit in with the the the. You know, the aesthetics of the existing home, so that it feels like it's integrated. And I think, you know, if you look at the existing houses right here, um, the in-law apartment is set back. And it's a subordinate structure to the existing, so it it falls nicely into place with that. Um, and so that's, you know, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
You know, it's five hundred forty six square feet total?
Yes.
So that easily fits within the basic ADU.
Yeah, thank you, yep.
It's on a slab.
Um, no, it's it's actually on heel of piers, you know, so it's from a structural standpoint.
So there's air, air underneath.
Yes.
The access to this in-law apartment, is there any outside access?
Yeah, so there will be access um on this side right here. Um, to a common patio deck that's out here.
Okay, so this is the doorway?
Yeah, there, yeah, yeah.
And then common access, uh you know, interior access. Um.
It's a hallway kind of through the right.
Another question on the site plan?
Yep.
Um, I'm seeing some overlapping lines, you draw one hundred feet plus. From one line sort of, kinda not to scale to another portion of the building. Uh, can we bring it up? Is it possible to bring it up there? Uh, it's right here.
Yeah.
So this is the one I'm referring to.
Yeah.
What's going on with the lines there?
So the um, the property line is the one that goes to, you know, that far point. And that dotted line is indicating a zoning um, uh scenario, it was to a boundary, yeah.
Okay.
So there in the, um, I believe you're in the R sixty, and what's the other zone?
I think it's historical.
Oh, then that's not zoning district, that's 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 just a.
That would be an overlay district.
So R sixty versus R forty?
And regardless, you know, we'd have to meet, you know, the building inspector's requirements for setbacks and all of those kinda.
Wish it does, because that line is not a property line, so it doesn't. Doesn't have an impact on that.
I don't think, does water go all the way down there? I know it's stats at the beginning of uh.
You say water out.
Hydrant, I saw a hydrant, but you do not have hydrants that go all the way down through, you you don't have town water that goes all the way down Pleasant Dale to your place.
No, we have a well as well.
Well, yeah.
And there, I'm not sure. You you know, I don't know how to help, like, what's the meaning, why is that a concern, like?
No, I'm just trying to think, you know, that dotted line, you know, is there something to do with? Some of the stuff that might be in there too.
I I might think it's just simply a a um, a zoning overlay, yeah. Yeah.
Odd, this is the first time I've ever heard it in so many years.
Yeah.
I didn't recall. Well. I haven't really looked at the R forty versus R sixty, cause that's what it would have to be, that's the only possibility.
But there's no sewer down there, so why would there be R forty?
The R forty, R sixteen did not, uh, take sewer into account. Let's go way back.
Oh, you, you got a good point.
Okay. But both, both are allowed to have this accessory dwelling.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't realize that the, uh, the R forty went down that far.
In my personal opinion slash point of concern, I would like to see a survey done. Um, I understand that what you've sketched is not to scale, and it may or may not be indicative of what you're actually doing there, but I would like to see, uh, when we do a special permit request for a survey, so that we can understand setbacks that are being proposed. Um, I know that the arrows are showing one hundred feet plus, obviously that's gonna be outside setbacks, but I think we're trying to make it very consistent when someone applies for these types of things, that we have a stamp survey that we can reference, um, for items such as this, just one man's opinion.
Can I comment on that? Or, or would, would you prefer other people speak first?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
When we apply for a permit with the building permit, we'll be required to meet the setback requirements. Um, there's a time constraint related to, you know, and it wasn't part of the requirements, as far as I understand it, um, as part of the planning board's decision.
So, um, Britton, to your point, I just pulled up the zoning map. There's no overlay zoning district near there? Then it's all R, uh, R sixty, but.
So what am I looking at?
So the answer is, I, I don't know what that dash line is, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that on our, on our assessor's GIS.
And that's.
That's something the survey would iron out, so there wouldn't be any question.
Cause it go, it goes across multiple properties, it does extend.
Correct.
It does extend up Pleasant Dale.
And not to be argumentative, but I did pull that right from the GIS, um, you know, thing. But what I'm, what I'm questioning is what the, what the public interest is from a planning board perspective of the survey, when the criteria for a special permit is listed in the planning board's criteria, and the survey is outside of that jurisdiction.
I'll defer to John on our requirements for such applications, but it behooves us as a board to look at an official document. Simply sketching something on an overlay that has no, no scale, no geometric information on it whatsoever, and saying, yeah, we're gonna be a hundred feet from here. Understanding that the building department is the final signing authority, but you're asking us to approve a special permit with no, um, understanding on where this is actually going to be in regards to the lot line. So we're, we're approving a, you do have elevations and you have very official sketches, but you, as far as where this is gonna fit on the lot, I, this is, this is hand drawn with no stamp, no scale.
And that will be required for, so in other.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want, I don't wanna be argumentative, I'm trying, because they, there's a timeframe in, in, involved here. And, um, within, and, and I too, like you, would defer to John as far as what the jurisdiction of.
So what I would say is, and this is a potential resolution, Britton, is, um, there's a special permit decision that's gonna be written, if you felt comfortable making that a condition of approval, for them to provide that before they, you know, at a certain point in the process, either before they, um, receive their building permits, or maybe occupancy for it, um, you know, because obviously, um, I have to sign off on that, the planning board has to sign off on that, so would that make you feel comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to supply it anyways, I'm just for our points of discussion.
Get provided to the planning board to make sure they're, they're gonna comply with zoning.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause when something comes through on the online permitting, um, and it comes time to sign off, that's something that I automatically look at, is they, they have to submit site, site plans that show that they comply with zoning. So if I provided that to the board and put it in the file, would that make you feel comfortable?
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate that. See, the idea being, the homeowner would have the hardship of getting the survey, not knowing that they have approval. Right, so they'd go out and get a survey and pay the expense of that, and then they don't have approval to do an accessory dwelling unit, which essentially, you know, they have a right, um, you know, I'm, I'm saying what my belief is, right? I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, uh, here, you know, I am trying to argue, but I'm not trying to be argumentative, I guess.
You're good, you're good.
You know, um, try to be respectful, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I think that'll satisfy both, is that's gonna have to be provided anyway to the building department, so that'll be provided on the online permitting, I'll have access to it, I can provide it to the board and add it to the file.
Perfect.
That, that's just it, I think our requiring it is kind of stepping on the building inspector's foot.
We would deny it if it didn't mean zoning, but it would be nice for us to see more detailed plans, of course.
We don't have a specific requirement for that.
So, so Norm, the condition would simply read that it needs to be provided to the board, which I could do from the online permitting. The applicant actually doesn't really have to do anything, I can make, I can make a copy of that off of the online permitting when I, when I review that, that building permit application. So it's not that the planning board would be requiring anything additional that is above and beyond what they're providing, it's simply getting a copy of what's already been provided to the building department, so. Um, so I, I'm not sure it would be stepping on their toes, it's just getting a copy that they'd be getting anyway and putting it into this file. So I agree with you, we don't wanna step on the building department's toes.
And I can understand that pencil drawing, not as official as like CAD doc or whatever, um, you know, you do survey, whatever software survey stuff, it'd be nice to have then a little more, something as accurate as it can be, you know, for even all of us to decide.
We'll make sure to provide that as John is.
I think we, I think we would have to have something more specific in our own regulations.
Okay. And maybe at some point, something will be discovered with this square that's.
It's just very interesting.
Yeah, that's, now you got me curious, I don't know what the heck that is.
I'm sure you have to do dig safe or something, so.
It doesn't show up. Well, dig safe won't tell you anything about that.
It does show up as a dash line, but it doesn't say what it is.
Yeah, it's not more of an easement than a.
It could be an easement, because, you know, who's behind here is the, is the, uh, the boss guy.
You know, I, I originally was the contractor, hired the, the, the people from the house, who, where they, uh, it's a modular home, brought, was brought in, and, and I'm pretty familiar with the property lines.
Well, and it's outside of the construction area anyway, so even if it was an easement.
Maybe, I can't see anything, but.
Oh, do you need my glasses, stuff?
I need more than that.
The curious about is this line right here. Okay, so this is, this is your house here?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was under the.
It's like the driveway coming in, right? This opening?
That's over here, way over here.
Oh, okay.
This is way over.
Way the heck back, you know, the farmer way back had it, or had an easement, so he could get to the piece of property behind.
Yeah, I know there's a telephone pole just outside.
No, no.
The property, the property was purchased from family, and I believe that, my understanding, what you told me once, I, I'm not gonna solve it here, my understanding was that that was left as an easement in case they wanted to build on one of the lots behind.
Yes.
Um, so that they could put like a driveway or something.
Cause there's a lot between.
Yeah.
Our house and, and the house over.
I don't believe that's the case.
I could, I could well be wrong.
Yeah, they wanted to leave a piece.
I know, but.
I, I don't think this has anything to do with that.
Oh, okay.
This is like a governmental.
Okay, okay, okay.
Designation.
I'll go, uh, I'll go talk to Amy. I'm gonna go talk to Amy. Order of assessors.
Right.
All of this will come up in terms of a building permit application anyway, you know, in other words, if there's an easement, building code will prohibit you from building, you know, in, in the easement, um, setbacks. So, you know, but I don't believe, I'm, I'm just about positive that it's not an easement, but regardless, it would be, it would be, um, identified in that survey and.
Okay, anything further?
Just one question, what's the left side setback? So as I'm facing the house, from the right, from that to the existing setback, do you know?
Um, I, I.
Or you just have the hundred feet?
I, I put a hundred feet, but I think it's thirty-five. But again, those, I, I would tip.
I require a setback.
Require a setback.
I think the sideline. Sideline's twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so you may be right, so certainly, it's a lot more than.
Yep.
You know, and I'm, my experience, I do that when I apply for a building permit. I was trying to, to answer the questions that were listed for the planning board's concerns.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else from the public?
I have a question, who, who is the current building inspector?
Yes. Yeah, Leah, you're on line there?
I have it here, so.
She's our building inspector. I don't think she's listening.
I would say, right now, that's kind of an ongoing personnel issue that, isn't.
David McCray.
No, not at all.
Oh, he's on?
So.
That's why I was, I'd be impressed who it was as well.
No.
He is no, he is no longer.
Yeah, that's an ongoing personnel situation, David McCray is no longer with the town.
I believe we have, well, the state.
Sorry, guys, it's Leah, I'm juggling stuff, I couldn't get to my phone right away. Um, as Tamika and John alluded to, it's an ongoing personnel issue, the job is, uh, currently posted, um, and they are, um, uh, a couple temporary, uh, I think an assistant and a temporary are, uh, doing the work, the immediate needs work, but the staff question probably goes a little after.
Right, anyway.
Thank you.
So, okay, anything further? Well, then do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, seven thirty-two.
Do we have a motion to grant a special permit?
So moved. Second.
Guys have to mix up the voting a little bit.
Go to the next one. And will that, can we get that requirement that Britton was interested in?
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm gonna draft up a decision for the next meeting on the twenty-fifth, that the board can endorse, and then it'll be filed with the town clerk after that, and that'll kick off the twenty-day period.
Anything further? Motion to grant the special permit.
I will second.
I will second.
Motion to grant a special permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Okay.
Oh.
Respondents.
Correspondents, yeah, we're going to six.
Wow. Wow. Okay. Special permit and site plan approval regulations, which, uh, we have been provided a copy of.
So, as I was going through the various regulations and documents for the planning board, um, I realized that the general filing requirements and the two thousand eleven site plan approval relate, regulations were, could be combined. And also, the planning board has site plan approval regulations, but nothing relating to special permits, which is similar, but different obviously, but the submission requirements are, are very similar, and the procedure's very similar. So what I just decided to do was marry those things and combine it into one document, rather than having two or three different documents. So that's what you see before you, it has all the various applications, it has the fee schedule. Um, and what, what I discovered is that there are, there are forms that, I don't know if these forms have been used in the past, but there's a, a, a general waiver form if someone's requir, uh, requesting a waiver from anything during the process of an application. It has a tracking form that allows staff to track the progress of an application. Um, so I figured it would be best to consolidate and update these things with the new, um, submission requirements that have been implemented as far as, um, you know, less cop, less paper copies of things. Um, so that's what you have before you right now, so, um, it's basically a combination of those things and, uh, basically updated a little bit.
Any language changes, or just?
Not really, no, just formatting and things like that.
It's nice to hand them one document then.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I figured it would be good to have one comprehensive document to hand applicants. So I, I, I can go through it and, and, you know, again, just having a table of contents to organize it a little bit, um.
What do you got? You mean, that page, you mean that pa, uh, oh, you mean that page? All right, so I had too much time on my hand. Well, a lot of this stuff we're kinda allowed, it's nice to say town planner, but the planning board should be involved also. A larger project, town planner may require, no, town planner, planning board may require.
What do you, can you, can you give me what you're referring to, Dick?
Page two, number two.
Yep.
I, I just, how does a planning board learn? By being involved.
So can, Dick, can you tell me exactly where you're talking about, so I can follow along?
Number two, for large project, larger project, town planner may require, I said town planner slash planning board.
This is, Dick, this is a pre-application meeting with department heads, it has not gotten to the planning board yet. This is not something that involves the planning board, this is at staff level. This is to get feedback from the various department heads before they submit an application, so the application can be more complete. In other words.
No, no, I don't care.
Well, you don't care, that's the way it's been. This, this is nothing new.
Only, only, you're the, the number three, but prior to that, it went through the planning board. So I'm saying, for thirty years worth of stuff, it came through us, we stayed on top of things.
These are the regulations that have been placed since two thousand eleven, Dick, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I didn't, I didn't change that, I didn't make it up.
I mean, I guess it comes before us when it gets clocked in.
Right, when you get an application.
So this is pre, pre-clerk.
I know, pre-clerk, and it's pre, pre, before, it used to be us, and now it's somebody else.
Yeah.
And to me, for a kinda allowed, it'd be nice to get a little bit more involved, instead of the last moment.
I guess we would be a part of the department heads, right?
That's not the way it's been done in any community I've worked in.
Town departments, does that include?
That includes fire, police, conservation, DPW, even the assessors, and it's, it's, it's at the conceptual level. And, for instance, when someone comes in with a subdivision approval, there may be something with the roadway or the hydrant placement that the fire department may, may wanna comment on, or the DPW, things like that. So, um, this is, this is basically a common element everywhere I've been, is they come in and they meet with staff first, because again, we're the gatekeepers. This is, this is part of our job.
And it also, if you, if, if you do a preliminary plan review, then you also shorten the clock for the planning board.
Correct.
To review at official capacity, so you have to be careful about that.
And the thing is, with larger projects too, you know, um, the, the applicant can always request and be granted an informal discussion at a planning board meeting, that can happen. I think we talked about that with the Oak Meadow, um, zoning. Is having a, a preliminary discussion with the planning board to get feedback, correct? So that, that can happen.
So you were standing there at the door.
Al- also kind of a part of, uh, ma- making sure that an, an application is complete, so that we don't have to waste our time.
Correct.
You know, going through the stuff and all of a sudden say, wait, wait, we need this, we need this, we need this.
Yeah, we don't have elevations, we don't, yeah, we've, we've been there, done that.
Yeah, this is, this is nothing earth-shattering, or there's no, there's no underhanded activity here.
My only problem would be if for some reason or another, we didn't have a town planner.
Then we'd have to do it.
Then, and I, and I think the default would be, it would just have to go back to the planning, wouldn't matter what. Yes?
And the thing is. Slippery slope, because we, if we're, yeah, it depends on the applicant.
That's why I say you keep involved in the thing for kind of loud, so.
Yes, but anytime, anytime you have a quorum of the planning board involved in something, it's a public meeting. This allows the applicant to come informally and get feedback going into their application, without having it at the public when it's not ready to be publicly reviewed.
I was surprised to see design standards in there, I didn't think, I thought that could be more regi. I guess I'm.
What page is that?
Defaulting, um, page five, and it, it probably is supposed to be there, I just, I started reading it and I said, you know.
Yeah, those, those, that's, we have that, that's in our regulations right now, yeah.
I almost thought I was gonna be rereading the subdivision regs or something.
That's, that's, that's word for word, yeah, that's what's in there right now. I mean, if you wanted, if the board wants to tweak these things and take some stuff out, you certainly can, but, um.
Some of the stuff comes from our town center's only meeting.
So I mean, we can look, we can look at streamlining this.
Talking about trees and things like that for kind of loud, we gotta make it dark on shore. Because we had a problem with trees, I don't know if you guys are.
Fast-growing, uprooted trees, I mean.
The roots, upheave the sidewalks.
Yeah, Richard, uh.
Yeah.
So some of the things I updated, for instance, I know that, um, on page four, under public hearing, the, the middle paragraph, it says, "The town planner shall provide the applicant with a copy of the hearing notice to be sent to the abutters as well as the adjacent towns by regular mail." That's something that's been a practice, but hasn't been put in writing. So I put that in there, so they know exactly, because some applicants don't know what's being sent to the abutters. They always ask me, so what's being sent to the abutters? I tell them, the public hearing notice that I put together and half-stamped in with the town clerk, so I thought that would be good to have in there, so they understand exactly what's being provided. And then, that last part, "The applicant shall send the notices to the parties of interest a minimum of seven days prior to public hearing date." Now, there's nothing in mass general law that dictates that, however, talking to various town councils, a general practice is that a minimum of seven days is considered appropriate notice for, um, abutters for a public hearing. So, so it's trying to give more specifics, so applicants know what to expect, so. I mean, if, if the board wants to take a look at this and remove certain things because you think it's too detailed, absolutely take it out. I have a question, just i- in, in one of the things we just heard. So here, we very clearly require, um, shall be prepared by a registered licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, architect, as part of the planned content requirements for special permit. What page is that? That's page, uh, well, on my package twenty-six, it's page three, planned content requirements, A. We didn't require that, and we just approved one. We said that we can't require that, because we're stepping on the building department's toes.
Yeah, scale, north arrow.
So we just approved a hand drawing, that who knows if it's accurate, I'm sure there's no nefariousness there, but if this is stuff that is a requirement, then let's make it a requirement, and let's be consistent. But if we wanna have Crayola drawings in here, then we gotta take that out.
Well, this thing says, "Site plans shall be prepared as applicable."
By a registered license, so what's the?
As applicable, what does that mean?
So that leaves some wiggle room there. Okay, so it's just at the planner's discretion, or do we have a discretionary checklist? It's actually the planning board's discretion, um, when, when Neil came before me with the first application, I looked, I looked at what he had prepared, and I, I, I was gonna ask him for something, um, along those lines, but I said, you know what? I said, present it, because it's up, ultimately up to the board. I said, if the, because the board always has the right to re, to request any additional information that it deemed necessary, so. Right, and so, yeah, so moving directly on to number B. Uh, there's no as applicable, that's just, you owe us this, which that plan had none of that. There's no escape clause there.
Can I ask a technical question? I'm just thinking of as Britain's talking. Is there an inconsistency between what we're listing as a requirement for a special permit versus what's in the accessory dwelling unit by law? As to what's required?
It's technically a special permit, right? It is a special permit, but, but the thing is, there's, that's, that's, that's a gray area. Because when you're looking at a special permit for a use versus site plan, so maybe we need to look at this, and maybe we need to tweak our language, to either be, you know, so either, again, this is something that's kind of growing pains, as I've been working with the board and working with the regulations, is where, where, where are we flexible, and where do we need to be less flexible?
That, that's the problem with trying to have a one-document fits-all. Uh, because there, there's a heck of a lot of difference, you know, you know, between a special permit for a common driveway, and a special permit for, I'll go right back, a motorcycle repair shop. There's a big difference there. And if you try to lump all of those on the one set of rules, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, so, as, I'm just using this as an example, I don't mean to kick the dead horse here. But if you look at number four, on this page three, A through H, none of that was on what we just approved.
Right.
Zero. No north arrow, no lot dimensions, no, um, locusts, no, none of it. So, and we just approved that special.
And do we need it?
That's the other question.
That's the question.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna have this, and we're gonna enforce it, we gotta, we gotta be consistent with it. So basically, the issue you're raising, Norm, is not because of the document consolidation, it's because of the regulations in place, and do we need to look at the regulations? And do we need to refine them? Do we need to simply enforce them?
If we're gonna use this document, I think we need to refine it significantly.
Okay.
That, that's my own personal feeling, but I, I don't. I'll leave that job to you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will work, I will work on this, and, um, see if I can come up with different language to present to the board, and see if we can come up with something that's, um, I guess, a little bit more, um, flexible, depending on the type of application that comes in.
Yeah, I guess under typical special permits, if it's possible, if you can say, well, what that if and or but might apply or not apply.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to give this some thought, I'll have to look at it and see, and see where, where I could change the language and how that would be changed, because I understand what you're saying, because when you're talking about a site plan, you're talking about the physical plan. But when you're talking about special permit, you're not talking about a plan, you're talking about a use, so how do you rectify those two things between what Britain's saying and what Norm's saying in terms of, yeah, I understand, it can't be one-size-fits-all, but we have to have something that, some kind of baseline for all plans that come before the board.
And it doesn't, on the front, it does say special permit and site plan, so I mean, they do
Yeah.
have the sense that they do, they share.
I mean, if you want me to go through the different types of special permits, and. I don't, I wouldn't say, and this, again, I'm just spitballing, I wouldn't go through every single type of zoning special permit, um, et cetera, like, I, I wouldn't do that, but if we have ones that are fairly common, access, accessory dwelling unit is one of those. I think that's something we could sort of simplify within this requirement, without trying to reinvent the wheel. Um, but, again, I mean, I, you know, from day one, I said, let's just be consistent in whatever that is, and whatever we have documented. If we're gonna require people to do it, we need to hold them to, whatever we've agreed upon as a board, we have to hold that. So the, the two types of special permit that seem to come up the most are accessory dwelling units and estate lots, is that correct?
And common driveways.
Common driveways, okay. Okay.
Which.
Well, common dri, well, yeah, I, I won't go down a rabbit hole, so it won't just. So let me take a look at this, see how I can generalize these requirements and apply them properly, and then see if I need to add language in for those common types of special permits, because again, this is gonna be, this is a work in progress, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to bring things more modernized, more consistent, so we're trying, we'll, we'll, we're getting there.
I'm, I'm also wondering about, uh, well, there's, there's another one, major home occupation, by the way.
Okay.
Uh.
Major or minor?
Special permit.
Major, because minor's not a special permit.
Major is a special permit.
We still see quite a bit of those.
Uh, uh, I'm also kind of thinking about some sort of like a dividing line between what amounts to, I'll call it private special permits versus commercial special permits.
Another use.
Because you're right, because to Norm's point, when you have an individual homeowner doing an accessory dwelling unit, the scope of that is different than if someone's doing a Walmart. Right.
Yeah.
And you don't want to, you don't necessarily want to hold those two different types of projects to the same, the same level of detail, the level, you know, and yes, part of it is cost. You know, do you want individual homeowners to be spending, you know, thousands of dollars on something that is not really necessary, or it's gonna make it financially unfeasible? You don't wanna punish the, the individual homeowner.
Exactly.
Too much, okay.
I would say at the end, it has the site plan approval checklist, but maybe there could be a open-ended special permit checklist, where it's just there for everyone to say, yeah, it doesn't have this, are we okay? But it's got a list of all the hard.
Or, or when they, or when they apply, we could, John, you could, with the applicant, you could say, hey, you need to request a waiver for. Well, and that's what I was getting at, because. All of these items, because it's an ADU, I know the board, they're gonna see it as an accessory dwelling unit to a residential. They're not gonna, you know, in the most part, they may or may not require these things, but you need to request the waiver for that, I think. Well, and that's, and that's exactly what I'm trying to get to, because that's the way I've done it in other communities, is we have a che, we have a checklist of submission requirements, and if I don't see it, I need to see a waiver requested from it. I don't think, that's, because that's not a heavy lift, that's literally them signing off on a waiver request and saying, no, I, I request a waiver for all of number three application procedure, based on ADU. Right, that's, that's exactly it, you know. So that may be a workaround that doesn't, doesn't get us down too much brain damage to figure out residential versus commercial versus commercial residential, uh, you know, I, I, I just, I'm throwing it out there for
No, it's a great idea.
Thinking about it, that's all. I think that's, I think that, that maybe the answer is put a notation in there, that, um, you know, as applicable, you know, waivers can be requested from anything, it's up to the board to grant it or not grant it.
Right.
And that's what I've always told applicants, is you can ask for the waiver, the board can say one of two things, yes, no, or require something a little, somewhere in between. You know, like traffic studies, Britain, you know this, traffic studies are always a bugaboo. You know, so, I've worked in towns that have very strict, a, a lengthy list of traffic study elements, and I'll have someone come in here and say, geez, do I really need this, do I really need, you know. I want a waiver of all of this. Yeah, you know, do, do I really need to do traffic counts, do I need to do turning room accounts, do I need to do this? And it might be, no, but the board for this will wanna see site distance because of the curvature of the road, or the topography of the roads. Well, if you were gonna set up a farm stand, for example, and people wanted to go there, and then, you know, there's a couple days out of the year where you're just slammed with traffic. Yes. And people come in here and say, well, you know, I, I wanna propose this, I want this farm stand here, you could absolutely request a waiver for that. And without having to go spend thirty grand on a traffic study with MDOT. Right. To waste all of our time, and the applicant's money and time, so. Maybe that's an answer, Britain, maybe I come up with something to add in here, to say that there are, you know, and I'll come up with some kind of language, I can't think of something off the top of my head, but I'll work with it and see if we can put in something, I think that's the answer is. Yeah, and I, I would say that that does put a little bit more on you, though, like educating the applicant, and saying, look, you're coming in with accessory dwelling unit, that we have these requirements, here's the requirements. Right. You know, do you have any of this? And if you don't, would you want to request a waiver, and here's why? Right, yep. So that's, I don't know, it's just, it's way out of a lot of the, make it easier, I don't know, just.
Let's let John work on it.
All right, sounds good. Get on it, John. I will.
Okay. Anything else on this one? John's got his homework.
It's getting there, yeah.
Okay, number seven, town planner report, comments for numbers in the use table and dimension regulations table.
So what?
Haven't even looked at it yet.
Okay, so, and that's fine, we're in June, this is gonna go to town being in the fall, so I mean, we, we are gonna be looking at a public hearing in October, so we still have some time. But I would like to start, I mean, this, you know, I, I know Dick has already marked his up, and we will get to those types of comments at a future date, like I said, I just wanna work on accuracy right now with these, to get it in place, and then we could start looking at what needs to be updated, and what needs to be changed, and we talked about some of that at the bylaws subcommittee meeting, so, that's not a big deal, I just wanted to keep it on the board's radar. And the other comment I'd like to make under my report is, I would like to apologize, it was brought to my attention that there was a typo in the pass code on numbers to participate by Zoom tonight, that was my fault, I apologize, there was a typo.
Don't worry, John.
So I just wanted to state that, and. So everything we just voted on is done, is. That's it, never mind. Come back in in two weeks. And, on a really great point, um, because we had had appropriate funding for a plotter, a plotter printer scanner for the annex previously, Austin, Tamika and I, uh, did some research today, and we are gonna be getting a plotter. So we will have the ability to replicate, scan, receive large plans, maps, and things like that, uh, very, very soon. So it's probably gonna go right next to the, where the printer is outside of Tamika's office, we're gonna get a smaller table for where people sit down at the computer for the building department, it's gonna be tucked right in there, so we're getting a Ulit packer, it's similar to the one they have over in the DPW right now, only newer. So that will, that, that might be delivered tomorrow. That's awesome. So, yeah, so we got a good deal.
And how much is it gonna cost me to have a, a couple of maps duplicated?
For you?
Five thousand dollars.
We have to, we have to pay for it some. What's the library need these days? What is that, what's that up to? So the nice thing is, we got a really good price on it, and, um, it was well within the budget, and, um, you know, so, so I'm thrilled about that, that is a real, that's something a lot of, uh, communities do not have, and it's gonna be used by, obviously, planning department, planning board, also building department, board of health, um.
Assessor?
Assessor, yeah, people over in town hall, but it'll be kept in the annex, so that'd be, that'd be great. And that's it for my report.
Item eight, any other discussion not recently anticipated?
Um.
Had a lot of discussion.
I had two questions, maybe, are we all going to the, um.
The CMR PC?
It is this Thursday.
Yes.
Do you wanna go? Did you sign up?
I, I've signed up.
You signed up.
I know Tim. Thursday is fifty-fifty, what time is it?
Uh.
It's at five, it's, it starts at like five PM, I think, is.
It's officially at five.
Early check-in starts at four, I think. Early check-in?
That's, yeah, they have, uh, the.
What are they doing over there?
Tea lift to take you up to the top.
No, they, you go to the top, and, oh, okay.
Hang around and have a couple of. Couple of. Sign in five.
So I will be attending.
It would be cool to have you there, but if you can't make it, it's work stuff, yeah, I know.
Um, I'll check right now, actually, I'll tell you. So right now, from what I understand, Keith, Norm, Tim and myself are attending on behalf of the planning board, I know Austin's going. I believe Leah's going, and I believe Harry's going.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So we'll have a good group at our, at our table.
It might be an email that you have to confirm.
Yes.
I can resend.
Is that the one you sent? The confirming, or does that?
That wasn't for me.
Okay.
I'll send you the login, it's like a.
Yeah, resend it.
State your name, and, just so they know whoever you are.
Is that like Animal House, I state your name?
Okay.
Um, one other thing, real quick, um, you know, a while ago, you talked about sidewalks, and extending sidewalks past Naqog and stuff like that.
Correct.
Um, can the town do it on its own, or do they, because you're on the side of certain roads, and or within ten feet, are you not allowed to dig and put pavement down? Do you have to, how does that?
Is that state or town jurisdiction?
It's state jurisdiction, on that.
It's state jurisdiction on that particular.
Numbered highways.
So you can't go anywhere.
It can be part of.
You can't be eleven feet off, fair easement.
You could, but then you're gonna, so the property owner then can say you can't touch it. That's private property.
You get blocks or people blocking.
Okay. But in that particular situation, that is. Mass dot has jurisdiction on that.
Yep.
And uh down to Pleasantale Road and then the road narrows.
Yep.
From there on to how far you wanna go, you know, would that'd be this town. Picking up the easements and things like that and it'll be probably up to the town to.
Yeah.
Get involved.
Just curious, because you see some of them, you know, they're pretty, you know, did we get approval to put them in or not, you know, and. Like the ones up by Heavy Evvies are pretty far off the road, you know.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, they've been there.
But when they repaved the, they redid those.
Yeah.
And uh and a lot of people are very discouraged with them. Because prior to it, the they weren't such a sharp curve, so you're gonna watch your tires not cutting, getting caught.
Well, yeah, yeah, the curve.
They were rounded. It was, what did they call it? A Cape Cod, Abram type of thing over in that area.
Okay.
But they come in and put the granite in and so.
Slice it up.
It's their money.
Yeah.
So you have to do with their.
I was curious how that process works.
Oh, it's complete streets also is another project that uh.
Which is part of the bicycle stuff and.
Well, it was also uh one of the things that Joe Buckley, the DPW, wanted to do a complete street for. From uh Main Street all the way down to Rutland Heights. For the for not only the schools to have a better road, also for the senior citizens and anybody else. Want to cut across there.
Yeah.
It was a better road altogether. He had it set up pretty good shape.
Okay. Public comment?
Did you guys already decide on the motorcycle shop? I I was late. I mean, I played every time to this meeting because I have family responsibilities. So I've been arriving to these things about seven o'clock. I'm assuming we were first on the docket at right at six thirty.
Yeah, you'd be up early.
It was early. Yeah.
So I'm assuming it was denied?
Yes.
On what grounds?
No communications.
Information.
Non compliance with zoning.
Sorry?
Non compliance with zoning.
Non compliance with zoning.
Correct.
So it's not zone for commercial?
The intended use that you had presented.
We would have liked to see early apologize. It's timing is bad. If you want to talk about it, we can, you know, if we have.
It kind of goes what we were just talking about.
We actually closed the public hearing.
The public hearing is closed on.
It did close it, yeah. I mean.
The additional, we just talked about the additional residential dwellings and how the difference of special permits and. Uh would be the would be completely different for the additional commercial dwellings and on a commercial piece of property. That's what we were just discussing most recently here about.
We've already discussed that particular project that you've applied for. We've had zero correspondence. Yes, yeah, you were here for it. You heard it.
Yeah.
What's a question?
How the last time we were here, um they were looking for a a nice cat thing. And the fact that, like you said, you just approved the crayon drawing or whatever, you know what I mean?
No, actually, the discussion was. Yeah. Tim, hold on, hold on, please. Tim was looking for renderings and I believe I pushed the board to come to a decision on whether or not. They want, they would approve that second building. I believe Norm's comment was left with, he left you with, it would be a tough road. If you chose to pursue that second building and there has been no reply to my emails, no communication from your side whatsoever since then, so we were left with no choice. But to deny the project because of non compliance with zoning, because I didn't receive any word as far as what the intention of the applicant was. And then it was a lack of information. I sent out multiple communications with with lists. Of information that needed to be submitted and it wasn't, it wasn't provided.
Okay. But back to back to the the last piece of paper you guys were discussing about the special permits and how. You're gonna either enforce them or not, or be lax on some of the requirements. And as far as, I'm assuming that the applicant is, you know, was. Askewed by the the fact that he had to invest more and more and more and not have an approval. And I believe that's what this gentleman just said about the residential.
Well.
They don't.
That was another separate.
We're not gonna go on like this because this project is not the poster child for what we're talking about. It's being used as an excuse. Simple ba- basic submission requirements were not submitted after multiple public hearings.
Okay, okay.
Period.
I got the point. It's denied. I understand. I'm just trying to say what Norm said because he actually used it as a an example about the special permit topic.
Yeah.
And it just seems like all the permits are special. Just how special are they?
And yours did include site plan, so you.
From the very beginning.
For that applicant, yeah.
The very pre.
Yeah, you're in a larger.
Meeting and all that other stuff with the fire and the police. Which were you, again, you just discussed in that.
Yeah.
Future applications, right? Where, you know, we're gonna have a pre-meeting with the fire, the police chief, the building inspector.
Which you did.
Which we did.
Yeah, yeah.
And we got all those requirements to get to you and that's what you were discussing, like, do we need that or do we just come right to you? So you guys know the stuff from the beginning.
This, the process was followed the way it was supposed to be for this project. You were proposing a commercial then slash commercial slash industrial project. You had your pre-application meeting. I worked, I worked with the applicant and yourself for weeks trying to get the application to where it was. Brought it to public hearing because I thought it needed to go to a public hearing. S- major components of the application submission were still missing and have not been provided through multiple public hearings, which is unacceptable. There was just no response, no information being provided, so. Not enough of, and that's a perfectly good grounds for denial of a special permit is lack of information.
And it just applies. Right, I understand. Just to that applicant, so you can bring other projects to the board, yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm discussing. I'm not discussing my first, you know, the the when it was on the docket.
Yeah.
You know.
Yes.
So it was for. Talking about the future one, which you guys were just discussing on how it will go, which you're gonna re, you're gonna refine it or whatever.
We want to make it easier for you and because there's a timeline.
Right.
Like if it gets clocked in and we're sitting here waiting for stuff, it can mess it up for either you as a property owner or the applicant.
Right, and in this case, it did, right? He was, he was stuck.
And there's gotta be stuff where, you know.
He had to leave his stuff on the property and then it looked like, you know, then you guys went walk the property.
Yeah, it's complicated.
Without the, without the building inspector, without the owner.
Okay, all right, that's, no, 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 we're not, we're not doing this.
The refining of it.
No, 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 it has nothing to do with refining.
Well, going forward, I, you know, if things are too, I apologize if things are too expensive and there there's this.
No, no, it's on the expense of just saying like going forward, the the refining of that document you were just trying to combine or whatever.
We've tried to be pretty good with you. I think the main one was. Say you don't want to do stormwater, well, you gotta just put it in writing.
Right, the waivers, right, that's another thing, yeah.
Well, and I believe that was discussed, Keith, and the planning board said, no, we're not waiving.
Yes, and so we, we, you can do it and then we gotta work on figuring out is it applicable? And then, you know, I would say going forward, it's possible that this site needs a stormwater report. For certain uses, right, special permit uses.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that, I mean.
Yeah, it's probably not appropriate to talk about it, but.
You're conjecturing on hypotheticals.
Yeah, and.
We don't do hypotheticals.
Yeah, essentially, we'd love to see you get that property.
Sure.
To something. I'm not sure what the next.
I'm sure it will.
Project would be.
I appreciate you guys' time and stuff.
Whether it's a restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
Or whatever you want to try.
To get the village center going, right?
You're there, you're there, you're right there.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we we should work in the future, of course.
For sure. Thanks.
I'll entertain the motion. Was there any other?
Move to adjourn at eight oh nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.